Recording in progress.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Greenbelt City Council to order. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Good evening. Ms. McKinney?
Here.
Ms. Pompey?
Here.
Ms. Poe?
Here.
Ms. Niesel?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Ms. Weaver?
You're in line.
Mayor Jordan?
I'm here. Hey, please join us for a moment of silent reflection as we think about several Greenbelters and others who have passed away since the last council meeting. Residents Robert Bob Hawke, Sr., and James Jimmy Edward Dobbins. Please join us in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Councilmember McKinney, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible.
Thank you so much. Let's see. Hey, the first section of our agenda is petitions and requests. It's an opportunity for residents and others to make a statement or to make an inquiry of the city administration or to counsel. We don't respond to petitions and requests on the spot. We make a note of them in the minutes, and staff will follow up, and if appropriate, we will respond. But it's an opportunity to have your say, three to five minutes. If you're in the room, if you raise your hand after being recognized, we ask that you go to the podium over there and state your name and where you live in Greenbelt, more or less, we need that for the minutes. If you are on Zoom, you can use the Q&amp;A tab to submit a question or petition in writing, or you can raise your virtual hand. And once again, after being recognized, we'll promote you so that you can speak. And if you are at home, either watching on cable TV, or on Facebook, or on YouTube, you can send us an email at questions@greenbeltmd.gov. Once again, three to five minutes, and we ask, as always, to be congenial and considerate of one another as you make statements. We're all neighbors here. So are there any petitions or requests? If you could raise your hand. Yes, Mr. Rand.
Hi, I am Bob Rand, 19 Ridge Road. I'm grateful to staff for the release of Tribasi Consulting's 94-page Phase One Justice, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Hot Report on the structure and culture of Greenbelt City Government. It's available as a link in today's agenda. However, I'm disappointed that this item, number 20, appears only in the consent agenda with the potential of getting buried, or I could say eclipsed, by other items. I recommend that council move this to the regular agenda, if only to offer a few remarks on the importance of the initiative and to provide support for Tyra Smith, Greenbelt's first DEI officer, and Hosei Salmaron, city manager. Their competent leadership will be crucial in facing the opportunities and challenges itemized in the report. Council's consistent and focused support will be critical in coming to grips with the report's findings and developing a roadmap for building a more just, equitable, diverse, and inclusive city government and community. The report is clear that council staff and residents have some work to do. Please consider moving item 20, Acceptance of the DEI Report, to the regular agenda to offer residents a vision of how the city plans to meet the opportunities and challenges presented in the report. Thanks for your consideration.
Other petitions or requests? Please, sir. Yes, please.
Bill Orleans, resident. For almost two years now, each petitions and request opportunity, I've taken advantage of the call and the question and the vote council made in closed session to issue a clarification of a statement, of a previous statement with regard to an action, a letter brought by the Public Safety Advisory Committee. I've been objecting to the council having taken that action in closed session since it's my belief, continuing belief, that council is not authorized to take actions in closed session, and I requested an apology from council. That's been essentially ignored, although I did receive a communication from the then-interim city manager that the city solicitor had determined that what council did was fine, by him at least. Sometime after that, months went by, I've been stating, requesting several times clarification of a statement made by Ms. Knight from Franklin Park in a work session with council when she said very clearly that Franklin Park had done a survey of the homeless population in Franklin Park and had to determine that most of the homeless in Franklin Park were from out of town. I've been asking for a copy of that survey, requesting that it be provided, community planning and development, so that we can ascertain the, have an understanding of what's in that survey and its methodology, and whether or not the statement of Ms. Knight was accurate. That's essentially also been ignored since I first started asking about it. About five months ago, it was announced that the city council had approved in closed session a bonus for the then-interim city manager. Again, I've asked for the statute enabling this council, or any council in the state of Maryland, to appropriate funds in closed session. I've not yet received an appropriate response, even an inappropriate response to that request for the statutory authority of council to do something it should know it should not have done. More recently, without going into any details about the story in the front page of the News Review or the petition made at the last meeting, we've all been made aware that a very longtime resident, employee of the city of Greenbelt is no longer in its employ. The fact that she was nearing her retirement, and I don't know all the details certainly, but the fact that she was nearing her retirement, and as a cost measure, her position was eliminated, and that she was not offered some alternative employment in order to accumulate the appropriate time for her full retirement, all that's beyond me, of course, and I think it was beyond council. At the end of the last regular meeting, two weeks ago, council announced that it was going into closed session, a closed session that had not been noticed, that had not even been posted on the door downstairs. It went into a closed session. I understand the emergency nature of the closed session, since I understand probably it was about the petition made earlier that day, that night. Council cannot willfully do anything it chooses to do. There's a code of conduct beyond what, which council has desires that you have to adhere to. When you hold meetings that, without notice, when you appropriate funds in closed session, when you make decisions that should be made in open session, fine, but in closed session, you are violating your oath of office, frankly. And at long last, I'm asking for council to acknowledge, and this pertains to old council and newer members of council, acknowledge that you have a responsibility to the residents of the city of Greenbelt, and this resident finds you failing to meet that responsibility.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to ask Mr. Salmaron, can you explicitly respond in writing each of the points? A number of allegations have been made here in this public forum, and I, for one, I'm not going to go there, but, you know, so if you could respond once again, because you've responded as well as Mr. George many times in writing to each one of these allegations that have been made, I'd appreciate it.
We will provide an itemized response to the five items that are noted, which are the closed session vote, requesting an apology from council, Denise Knight in Franklin Park's statement about the homeless survey, a bonus payment to then-interim city manager, and questions regarding a closed session on the proposed restructuring plan and position elimination.
Thank you very much. Are there other petitions or requests? Please.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and the city council. Thank you. My name is Hank Meyer, 26 Woodland Way. Perhaps other people, as well as myself, recently read an article in the News Review about the termination of a longtime employee short of her retirement, and the reasons given were nebulous at best. It would be nice to see clarification of the real rationale and whether or not this termination followed all the codes and policies of the city of Greenbelt, and moreover, do other city employees have to fear that their retirement that's been earned so hardly over many years could be terminated at merely a whim? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other, are there any petitions or requests online? Anyone else in the room? Thank you very much. As I mentioned, when a petition or request is made, it's noted by the city clerk, there's a log that's maintained, and it's incumbent upon the staff to research and to respond in writing usually, sometimes that's electronic by way of email, usually it's a note. But these petitions and requests are not lost on us at all. We do hear, and we entrust our staff to respond. So that would actually, if there are no additional petitions or requests, need to move to the consent agenda? Are there any modifications to the consent agenda? No? Okay, now, we did have a petition just a few moments ago, and I think what I'd like to, in way of a response, we did hold a work session with Tribasi, and there's additional work to be done. Rather than pulling it off of the agenda now, I think I would rather continue when staff is prepared to actually have a broader discussion. So unless a council member wants to actually pull it off of the agenda, the consent agenda.
I would like to have it as a separate meeting, either add it as a work session or to an upcoming meeting where we can ensure all of the staff members from the city who are a part of that process for the city are able to be present and walk us through the final report.
Okay. So could I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as it's been forwarded?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That measure carries. That would actually bring us to the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda or additions to the agenda? And if there are none, could I please have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Pompey is seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Are you opposed? The measure carries. Thank you so much. So that's going to bring us to the communications section of the agenda, and the first, we have a couple of proclamations. The first is Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month. I'd like to present a proclamation declaring April as Autism Awareness Acceptance Month, and Udomans and Power Gardner Lemieux are here to accept the proclamation. Could you come up, please?
Welcome. Whereas the strength of Greenbelt is diverse people living together in a spirit of cooperation, we celebrate all people by sharing together, all are enriched. And whereas autism impacts people regardless of race, ethnicity, or socioeconomic backgrounds, and whereas autism spectrum disorder, ASD, may present challenges in communication, social skills, and behavior, yet individuals with ASD exhibit a range of quality strengths and challenges. And whereas April is a month dedicated to fostering awareness, inclusion, and acceptance of autism within the city of Greenbelt, we're committed to ensuring equal access to services, events, and activities that empower all individuals with autism. And whereas the city of Greenbelt acknowledges the need for spaces that not only accept, but also celebrate and represent all groups within the autism community. And whereas the city of Greenbelt acknowledges and aims to sustain a community that is socially aware, valuing and celebrating diversity within the ASD community, which in turn celebrates diversity, diverse minds. Now, therefore, I, Emmett V. Jordan, by the authority vested in me by the residents and city council of Greenbelt, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month in Greenbelt to raise public awareness around autism and the many issues surrounding it, understanding the challenges it presents, and highlighting the programs developed to support individuals with autism and their family. I'd like to present you with this proclamation. Picture.
Thank you so much. I don't know, if you would like to speak or to say anything about Autism Month, please.
Good evening. I just want to thank all of you for recognizing April is the month for autism awareness and acceptance. We in Greenbelt Recreation, and I believe throughout the city, take a great deal of pride in making Greenbelt an inclusive space, and we certainly do so in our recreation programs. I'd like to introduce you to my colleague, Priya Gardner Lemieux. Priya is our interim therapeutic recreation coordinator, and she is responsible for all of our active aging, 60 and over, programs, classes, and trips, as well as our inclusion program. So during the summer, Greenbelt is filled with city camps, and Priya's primary focus is making sure each of those campers has a successful camp experience. And so Priya would like to share a couple of her goals for this summer. Priya?
Welcome, Priya.
Thank you, Ann, and thank you, city council, for, excuse me, I'm a little nervous. Thank you, city council, for recognizing and declaring April as Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month. So as Ann mentioned earlier, a couple of the goals that I'm looking forward to achieving is building relationship with parents of campers that could benefit from a little extra support, and we would like to build those relationships by utilizing our new camper intake form, which Ann and I have been working very diligently on, and I'm a little proud of it. Another goal that we would like to achieve this summer is providing training for all camp staff from CARES. We have Teresa Smith coming in to do specialized training for all camp staff so they have inclusion awareness, and then we're going to do a more in-depth training for inclusion support counselors, and we are hoping that'll all make, it's not going to be perfect, but it's a step closer to a higher goal that we're trying to achieve.
Thank you very much. Thank you for what you're doing. Autism is something, I heard the statistic yesterday, that one in 36 individuals are challenged by autism in one way or the other. So it's a very common situation. It's important for us to collectively pause and consider what the impacts are and how we can be more accepting and supportive as we, you know, just deal with all sorts of different people throughout the year. So Autism Awareness Month, I really appreciate your efforts. Ms. Pope?
Yes, so thank you so much, because it's so important that we have our camps, that they're inclusive. I've been working with autistic children for the past 20-some years, and it's amazing what you can learn from them, right? Because some of those kids are truly amazing and have talents that, you know, you wouldn't believe, so, and it's a very common issue. So I'm glad that we're doing this, and I'm glad that we're offering that. I think that's very important and just speaks of who we are in Greenbelt. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Before you go, you mentioned summer camps, so I know that they have a tendency to fill up pretty quickly. How are we coming along if someone wants to participate in one of the programs, or if someone has special needs? How would they go about making us aware of the needs? Is it too late to enroll in summer camp?
No, we do still have-
For you it is.
Okay, it's too late for me.
The age group is filled.
We take volunteers for anyone who's interested, but we do still have some openings in some of our camps, but the sooner you can make a decision to enroll, please do so. And part of the enrollment process, the families fill out, is an intake document where they indicate whether or not their child would benefit from inclusion support, and that begins the dialogue between us, primarily Priya, and the families. We collect a lot of information from the family. We ask for their guidance in strategies to help their camper be successful, and then we have an ongoing dialogue with all the families throughout the camp season, and we continue to work towards making every camper have a successful experience.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much. And just in terms of staffing, are there any internships or part-time employees? Is there a need for additional part-time employees?
Absolutely. If you go to the city website and look for job openings, you'll see quite a plethora of camp and other openings within the recreation department, both for interns or volunteers, as well as paid staff.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Pope?
Yeah, quick, I also want to mention, I forgot, that Priya is now also in Spring Hill Lake Elementary School. She comes to visit us and gets to also work with some of our children, especially our super second graders, right? Ann had reached out to me a few months ago, eight weeks ago, to see if there might be a possibility or an opportunity for Priya to be able to come into school and do a volunteer on a volunteer basis, so she can also observe these students and see how, or learn how to interact with the students, not just, I know you do a lot with the senior population. So I was glad to establish that opportunity for her, and we are so glad to have you, and I'm always glad to see you, even though when I walk right past you, because I'm always running around. But yeah, thank you. So she's awesome, and I think that's just wonderful. Thanks.
Thank you. We're very grateful, Ms. Pope, for your assistance in getting that program established. We hope to keep it going.
My pleasure.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Thank you. And next up, we have an Earth Day proclamation. This year marks the 54th anniversary of Earth Day. Kevin Carpenter Driscoll, the city's environmental coordinator, is here to accept the proclamation and to give an overview of this year's Earth Day plans. Kevin, could you come forward? Let's see, is this thing working? Is it on?
Yes, it is. So you can walk around the whole room?
Like the CMA Awards, you could just go over.
Okay. Whereas Earth Day was first celebrated April 22, 1970, with the goal of inspiring environmental awareness and encouraging the conversion, conservation, production, and appreciation of our nation's natural resources, and whereas it is the responsibility of each of us to safeguard the environment by recognizing that all human life depends on the earth and upon one another for our mutual existence, well-being, and development, and whereas Greenbelt supports the climate change initiative goals of the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments and the State of Maryland's Greenhouse Gas Reduction Initiative, and whereas Greenbelt takes many steps to protect and enhance our natural surroundings through a variety of positive actions, including community cleanup events, planting projects, refuges, and recycling initiatives, and educational forums and workshops. And whereas Greenbelt is recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, a Bee City USA by the Xerces Society, a Maryland Smart Energy Community, Sustainable Maryland Certified Community, and an Environmental Protection Agency Green Power Partner, and has pledged to continue increasing its recycling use, recycling rate, expanding its fleet of alternative fuel vehicles, promoting green buildings and complete street techniques, increasing energy efficiency, improving air quality, and preserving its open spaces. And whereas the city established the Greenbelt Advisory Committee on Environmental Sustainability and a Green Team to study, investigate, and advise council on environmental issues impacting Greenbelt, and whereas Greenbelt proudly recognizes all who participate in Earth Day for their proactive dedication to shaping a better future. Now, therefore, I, Emmett V. Jordan, by the authority vested in me by the citizens and city council of Greenbelt, do hereby issue this proclamation in honor of the 54th anniversary of Earth Day, and urge all of our residents to celebrate Earth Day by supporting and joining in efforts to protect our environment and preserve the beauty, wonder, and diversity of our earth, earth, land, skies, and water. Kevin, I'd like to present this to you. Hey, thank you. We've got, you've got a number of activities that's coming up. April the 22nd is Earth Day, but I think we'll actually be engaging in the activities on the 20th. Is that right? The 13th?
That is correct. So the 13th will be the Arbor Day celebration, working with Brian Townsend and John McMillan from the Horticulture Crew to reestablish some of the understory that we lost from those storms a few years back. On the 20th, for Earth Day, we'll be working at another location in Buddy Attic Park, where I've been working with some Eagle Scouts to remove invasive species and restore the understory there as well. So we're going to continue removing those invasive species and do a planting on top of them, so poll and replace event. I'm going to try and get some refreshments for everybody, because I know somebody likes refreshments. And I think we're going to have a great time. It's from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on the 20th. To join in, give me an email at kdriscoll@greenbeltmd.gov.
Now, where will we be meeting up for this? It's in a slightly different section of Buddy Attic Park.
Yeah, for my event, we'll be meeting up by the playground and moving down the hill from there.
Okay, and Arbor Day, which is next, this coming Saturday?
Yeah, Arbor Day, I believe they're going to be meeting over by the Cove section.
Uh-huh.
You can't miss it. There's a huge trailer, but a big sign there.
Yes.
That's almost my plan, Linky. I saw it today, so it's great. So Lake Crest Drive, go all the way down next to Charlestown North.
Yeah, by the tennis courts.
Yeah.
We encourage folks that can bike, walk to the location. Be great, because parking is limited in that area, or the alternative is to park at Buddy Attic and walk across.
Mr. Salmaron, that sounds like a challenge to me. I'll ride my bike if you ride your bike.
Challenge accepted.
Okay. And we know Mayor Potem Weaver's going to be on her bike.
Yes, that was my plan, as long as it's not raining, but then I suppose we'll have to postpone the event anyway.
Not the R-word, no. Rain, no, but Earth Day, 54 years, it's an amazing day to acknowledge the earth and our connection to it. So this is one occasion, but let's make Earth Day every day. And, you know, I commend you on your activities, organizing volunteers to do so many things throughout the city. So thank you for putting this plan together, and I'll be looking forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, that's going to take us to the next section of the agenda, administrative reports. Mr. Salmaron, how are you?
I am great, thank you, Mayor. It's a beautiful day today, saw the eclipse.
Got my glasses right here.
Quite a sight. Nice, nice. So thank you for joining us for the eclipse activity. I've included my report, numerous activities are in the works, but I want to highlight a few of them. The, I've had conversations around the marketing strategy for the city, as council has set aside funding for marketing initiatives. So we're in conversations with experienced Prince Georges and the Washington Business Journal about getting their expert opinion of how to do targeted outreach to businesses that we want to attract to Greenbelt, and also how to attract more consumers for our existing businesses in Greenbelt. So we're working on that strategy. This week, sorry, last week, we hosted the two DEI town halls. We had 75 employees in attendance. Tyra, or DEI officer, has a survey with the employees, and we're getting great feedback on the town hall, and I welcome the opportunity for the team to have a conversation about the DEI report and what initiatives we're planning in response to that. And I would like to state that while we haven't had the- And I would like to state that while we haven't had the conversation about next steps and actions, we are already working on DEI initiatives. I hope that has been transparent in the proposed budget. There's a lot of DEI language, DEI initiatives across the organization. So we're working on those items. Other things we're working on is the National League of Cities 100 Year Celebration. We are hosting the Road Show on April 15th. That would take place here in the municipal building. We'll have a tour of the facilities and take a picture out of the Roosevelt Center.
Yeah, the Road Show, the National League of Cities, it's their 100th anniversary. So they have an RV, and they're actually driving it around to member cities. So the president of the National League of Cities, Clarence Anthony, and others will be visiting with us. Is it 10:45?
10:45, correct. They'll be out, we have them until 12:30. So we look forward to hosting National League of Cities. Our HR, human resources is currently out to market, looking at our healthcare insurance. We're looking at some cost increases. Mr. DeWayne Martinez is actively negotiating with the current provider. And we're looking at the market to ensure that we're getting the best rates for employees. Included in the report, you'll see something new is the citizen engagement metrics, looking at our digital outreach via the newsletters and social media. You see significant reach in our emailing platform. We see growth opportunities on social media, and so you're seeing those numbers there. I welcome feedback. I want to make sure you're getting the information you need. We have extensive report on these outreach, and we're hoping to distill that down to meaningful numbers. So that's new in the report. The team launched the pedestrian bike implementation project. I state that because we welcome the opportunity to tour council, have a tour for council of all the pedestrian bike projects. Should council want to see those projects. This is in keeping with a previous tour that we've done for city council, looking at all of our facilities and what major improvements we'll be making at our facilities. On May 3rd, we are hosting a compost operation ribbon cutting. I've sent out invitations to all of council for those activities. So we welcome your participation. Public Works has installed a new bulletin board at Shrum Hills Park, and it's being actively used. And finally, May 3rd, we have the, sorry, May 17th is the Bike to Work Day. So that's how we welcome early registration. You sign up by May 3rd, you get a swag bag.
Get a T-shirt also. Mr. Sammarone, you talked initially about businesses, and you mentioned marketing. But, you know, there's a lot of concern, rightfully so, in the city right now about the state of our local businesses. I believe one of our restaurants, Chevy's, closed a few days ago, and TJ Maxx over in Beltway Plaza closed recently. So, you know, I appreciate the focus. I think we need to be very, very attentive to listening to our existing businesses to help them stay here, business retention, but also in kind of developing a more proactive way of just presenting the city and its advantages of locating here. So, you know, I urge you to continue to focus on that, maybe even put additional focus. I think there are a couple of new businesses that are actually coming. I thought that I heard there's another credit union that's going to be coming over to Greenway Center. Lafayette Credit Union, I believe, sort of ribbon or something at some point, pretty soon.
I don't have that on my radar, but I look into it. And Lafayette Credit Union is, it's grown in the region. So they're a strong credit union in DC and Maryland. So I wouldn't be surprised if this market is attractive. Going back to the marketing strategy, the Assistant City Manager, Tim George, and myself met today to discuss our strategy for filling in the Economic Development Manager position and what we're focused on. So we're going to expedite that and get that posting out next week. On the marketing strategy, the strategy has to be multi-pronged approach. We need to attract consumers, to bring consumers to our local business. Foot traffic's important, that consumer base for businesses is important. And that's the, we're looking to partner with experienced Prince Georges on reaching out to the consumer. So that's the consumer side and looking at Washington Business Journal and other business associations for the business attraction piece. The mayor reminded me of the economic development study that the city had commissioned many years ago, and there were some sound recommendations there, specifically a marketing strategy, which is one of the items that our contacts with the Washington Business Journal asked if we had, and strongly recommended that we formalize our marketing strategy for the city, having a formalized strategy. So we're going to explore that opportunity, and we'll look at designating the part of the ARPA funding that council has designated for marketing to develop a marketing strategy for the city.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Sometimes when you say marketing, people have a negative reaction to marketing, but it's really being able to tell the Green Belt story on the one hand, on the other hand, just listening carefully to the existing businesses and making sure that we're as responsive as we can be to their needs.
Right, the jargon can be off-putting, but it's important work that we tell our story, we tell the value that Green Belt has been, is, and will continue to be.
Councilman McKinney?
Yeah, I also wonder if there's some partners that, in places that we can learn from outside of Prince Georges County that are still within the Washington metro area. So I think there are a lot of cities and jurisdictions just in other counties that really have been successful in retention of businesses and building those partnerships that really look at what does that consumer base look like for the city? That's reflective of the city and the values of the city. So I would just encourage us to not just look at Prince Georges County, but also look at some of the others, whether it be Montgomery County, DC, and things like that.
Yeah, also, there's a, Ms. Pompey, there's a piece of legislation that the Maryland Municipal League has been championing. It has to do with creating tourism zones. Did they talk about that at the PG CMA call? Yeah, I believe there's, of course, you don't really know what's going to happen tonight, because this is the last night of the legislative session. So there are bills that are on hold, there are other bills that are going through. But I think, you know, there's been talk about using a arts center designation for Green Belt. And that didn't really seem to be the best fit, but there's some new, there's a new tourism designation that I believe is moving forward, and I think we may benefit from that, so. Any other questions or comments?
I have two more items. One is about the tax rate. Sorry, I forgot to mention this early on. The state law no longer requires us to have a public hearing if the tax rate is not changing for the upcoming fiscal year, the budget proposal, which that is our current position, that we are not changing the tax rate. We haven't changed it for a few years. So we're not required to have a hearing on-
On constant yield tax rate.
So I bring this up to council because I know taxes are of concern. Since we're not required to have a hearing, if council's desires to talk about the tax rate, we could have it as a separate agenda item at a council meeting or a work session on our tax structure.
Right, and just to be clear, we are going to have a hearing, two hearings on the budget.
Budget, correct.
But there was a requirement that we explicitly advertise the constant yield tax rate and have a hearing on that. And it's kind of difficult for most people to wrap their head around. And that's where the state had calculated what the tax rate would be in order to bring in the same amount of income this year as last year. And so because of a bill that passed last year, we don't have to do that. But we're still going to talk about it. We still have two public hearings on the budget before it moves, if it moves, if council decides to approve the budget. We got to have those two hearings.
Yes.
And there's one more.
The second item is the legislative support. You mentioned that as we're winding down the state legislator. We welcome the opportunity to get feedback on our work on the legislative support. You can send me that feedback. We're going, Tim and I are going to have a meeting with our consultant to make sure that we're meeting expectations and council's getting the information it desires.
Very good, thank you. Any question? Yes, Ms. Pompey?
I just, it's more of a comment. I just noticed that you, the city had held two town halls concerning the Jedi Report with staff, two to our town halls. So I appreciate that you guys are working through that process, that you guys, you know, that you are churning on it, that you're making it happen. And I was just wondering if there are any next steps now that those town halls have been hosted.
Yes, and we hosted the two town halls. They were strategically coordinated to make sure that we're getting, we're providing employees opportunities to participate. We also provided interpretation for the morning session. So we had simultaneous interpretation provided in the morning session. In terms of next step, we have a call to employees to participate in the action team, the Jedi Action Team that Tribasi recommended to council to us engage. So we started, we did a survey to measure engagement and interest in that. And we have a few people that have already signed up. So that's on the action teams that are going to lead the work. The senior leadership team has implemented DEI objectives into our budget. And so that's part of the outward-facing work. There are a list of recommendations in the report that we will look to see which items are low-hanging fruit, if you will, things that we can readily execute with low cost, low effort, and then put plans in place for high-value opportunities that we need to strategize and execute.
That's great. Thanks for that update.
Mr. Hartman?
Michael Hartman, Two Court Garden West, just two comments. The first, the mayor mentioned credit union coming to Greenbelt Roosevelt Center. In fact, on February 2nd, the Green Belt, or rather, the Prince Georges Community Federal Credit Union announced its merger with the Green Belt Federal Credit Union. And so I don't know if that's what you were talking about, but they are going to-
No, it's different, yeah.
They did merge officially in February 2nd, they announced it. The second thing is that the city has been very helpful for the Green Belt Business Alliance in its formation, very supportive. And I hope that the city will make, work with the Green Belt Business Alliance in your efforts to attract new businesses and to help other businesses. You've helped the GBA so much, and it's nice to give back as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Let's move to the next item.
I have one quick one.
Oh, yes, yes, Ms. Weaver.
I just wanted to check, because I saw that the meeting schedule still indicated the four cities meeting on the 25th. Have we confirmed that that date is changing?
Yes, we have, yeah.
So is it, it's going to be the following week? Is that correct? Just I want to make sure I have it on the right place on my calendar.
Is, Madam Clerk, you've been in correspondence with Berwyn Heights. The reason for the change is, they're actually having an election over there in Berwyn Heights, and they have a candidate forum on that night. So I believe the plan was to actually move it to the next Thursday. But I'm not sure that we've gotten confirmation from New Carrollton and College Park as yet.
Park is confirmed.
Okay, so we're just waiting for New Carrollton? Okay. So I would hold that date, which, the date of that is May?
2nd.
May 2nd?
7 o'clock.
7 o'clock here in Greenbelt?
Yeah.
So hold that date, save the date. Okay, I'd like to move to the next section of the agenda, and that's under legislation. Item number 11 is a resolution to permit concurrent membership on multiple advisory boards and committee, as committee volunteers. So I had, I've been speaking with Mr. Sammarone about putting together a resolution that would allow our volunteers on advisory boards to serve on more than one committee. Some of our advisory boards and commissions, committees are ad hoc. They just meet occasionally. Some of them meet very, very infrequently. And some of these same committees have very specialized needs just in terms of the skill sets that are involved. So there's a resolution for first reading. And I'll go ahead and read it into the record. Here it goes. "A resolution for concurrent membership on advisory boards and committees. Whereas our organization recognizes the value of diverse perspectives and expertise of individuals who serve on both advisory boards and committees. And whereas advisory boards and committees play a crucial role in providing specialized knowledge, historical context, and recommendations to the council. Whereas some individuals may be willing to contribute their insights and skills without taking on the full responsibilities and potential liabilities associated with board memberships. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of council, city council of Greenbelt, Maryland, that city permits individuals who are members of the Board of Appeals, Employee Relations Board, Ethics Commission to serve concurrently on any other advisory board or committee." So that's the resolution. It's for first reading. You know, so this is something, we submit things for first reading. We'll discuss this at the next meeting, I suppose, and we can get into a deeper discussion. But because the Board of Appeals, the Employee Relations Board, and the Ethics Commission meet pretty infrequently, that's why I've put this forward. You can talk about it when it comes up again. So it's first reading.
I'm curious about the liability that someone on a committee board would have. I think this needs to be accurate. That's not accurate, because no one on a city board has any liability for, you know, legal liability or anything else. So I think you should make, you know, an accurate statement there, because there is no liability. If there was liabilities, people could be held legally responsible for their decisions. Maybe they wouldn't want to be on there. And so it's an advisory board, so there is no liability at all. So I think you need to change that resolution, because it's not accurate.
I think we should remove that. I think it'd be confusing. Yes, the work itself has minimal liability.
Limited liability. But yeah, let's tweak that a little bit. Okay. And that'll come up again, public input, and we can discuss it some more. Item number 12. Storywalk Project. "The Prince Georges County Memorial Library System was awarded a $20,000 nonprofit ARPA recovery grant from the city of Greenbelt for a storywalk project. A storywalk is an innovative and delightful way for children and adults to enjoy reading and the outdoors at the same time. Pages from a children's book are attached to pedestals, which are placed along an outdoor path. Given the project's parameters, staff identified the path that runs from Bradenfield Tennis Courts beside the peace pole through the underpass and around the playground by the museum. The project was reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the Advisory Planning Board, and the Advisory Committee on Education." John Pfeifer from the Prince Georges County Municipal Library System is here to, he's with donor engagement and grants, and he is in attendance to discuss the project and answer some questions. And Greg Varda is also present. So staff, there's mixed recommendations from staff. Staff recommends that council approve the implementation of the storywalk project, as detailed in the APB report. Furthermore, staff proposes that this initiative be introduced as a pilot project with an 18-month evaluation period. Upon completion of this evaluation period phase, staff will present a comprehensive analysis and recommendation to council regarding the potential retention, modification, or removal of the installation. The pilot approach will allow us to assess the project's impact and effectiveness within our community comprehensively." So I'd like to invite Mr. Pfeifer up to the microphone. And you've got, there's another representative of the library here?
Karen Luoma is with the, Karen is the area director of the five northernmost branches in our system, including the Greenbelt branch.
Well, nice to have you. I mean, you're around in Greenbelt all the time, so. Nice to have you with us. So do you want to give us a brief summary of the project? And then we'll kind of turn to Mr. Varda and have some discussion from- and have some discussion from council and the public?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not 100% sure I can outdo your summary that you just read from the report. Storywalks have been implemented across the country as ways for families to read books outdoors and to sequentially walk along a path. In this case, the path that Mr. Varda and staff identified is immediately adjacent to our library, which is very convenient for staff to maintain and to swap out the pages in the books every four to six weeks. So there's always something fresh for families to, to read. And to use the word of the day, we'll also market it so that we can attract more people to the city.
Well, thank you, thank you. And we've put a, a diagram up on the screen so that the Zoom participants can actually see the diagram of where, where the stations would be located. And I'm looking, it looks like there are about 10 stations. How many stations are there?
Twenty-one stations.
Twenty-one stations?
Yes.
So it actually leads all the way to the underpass along, up to, up to Ridge Road, I guess?
Yeah, we'll take a break at the underpass, and then it will continue in the loop on the other side of the underpass.
So i- if, if the family, with a couple of kids, was coming out of the rear lower exit door of the library, how would they access the path and where would they start?
Yeah, we'll have directions for them to walk a little bit to the north, to the tennis courts. And then the, the good news is they, they can drop the books that they got at the library in the car. They can walk up, begin the storywalk on the other underpass, and it ends right at the playground where they can spend as much time as they want.
Yeah, very good, very good. So I'm wondering, I'm being very familiar with the area. There's a pitch to, to the ground. It's sort of, the stormwater tends to kind of roll right down there, not so much along the path. And there is, there's an existing path from the parking lot that goes down to Bradenfield or to the next area. So Mr. Varda, would, would you like to kind of comment on the specifics of the, the site?
Yeah, so we, we talked about a lot of different locations, and we came up with this site mainly because it's, it's adjacent to the library. It's not next to a road, given that smaller kids are going to be walking this path. And it encircles a playground, and the storytime book would end at the playground. It would be a nice place for the kids to play and socialize. So.
That would be the playground that's adjacent to the museum?
That's correct.
Okay, so they, they would actually start down by the Bradenfield baseball, the tennis courts?
By the tennis, it would not, the, the pedestals would not impede on the path that, you know, you go down the hill a little bit by the tennis courts. It would start, if you're walking up from St. Hughes, you can make that right, going up toward the underpass. That's where it would start.
Okay. So, and so it would be actually directly adjacent to the parking lot. It wouldn't be below, it would be at the same level as the, as the parking lot itself. You know, there's two, two parts. There's the upper section of the parking lot, then there's the lower section. It would run sort of along there.
Yes, it would run, run along the path where the peace pole is. And it's a, not a concrete path, but an asphalt path that was put in many years ago, I would assume by Public Works or a contractor that leads up, you know, off the main path that goes along Bradenfield up to the playground.
Right, right, right. So you have that peace pole in the benches there. That, that's sort of a sacred place in a way. It is a sacred place. It's dedicated, the, the benches are dedicated to several Greenbelters that were just passionate and, and very impactful in, in the city of Greenbelt in terms of their focus and dedication to, to justice and peace and whatnot. So that peace pole's sort of a quiet place. It's not, you don't see a lot of people there, but it's a special place. So, council member.
Couple of questions. In the, in the packet, it says that you are planning to sort of assess the impact and the effectiveness of the project. I, I think it's great from an experiential learning perspective, this approach to talking and, and bringing stories to life for kids. I, I am curious about some of the other places that you looked at to place this. I know that we have a beautiful new playground going in near Spring Hill Lake, and there's paths that kids walk from that neighborhood over to the recreation center, as well as beautiful trails around Shrom Hills Park that lead to a beautiful garden. And I'm just wondering, if not with this, if there is the potential, especially if you're measuring the impact for that in the future, and potentially, you know, if that could potentially happen. Because I think it brings a whole new audience that could benefit from this particular experiential learning opportunity.
Yeah, I think if this program is successful, we could look at other places in Greenbelt to include the storywalk project. One of the, one of the parameters is finding a path that's long enough to, that you can put an entire book into. Over in Franklin Park, a lot of those sidewalks are along the roadways, and the path that I think you're talking about is not very long. But that's not to say we can't do something similar. We would just have to, to figure that out. Yeah. And we talked about parks, and given that Buddy Attic is going through the, the master plan project now, and we thought it might be better to stay away from the parks. And we can, we can, we can revisit Shrom Hills Park. I'm not sure what the feeling would be on that, but this area seemed like the most logical area at the time.
Just get some impact in the future, get some additional impact. I know that the Advisory Planning Board weighed into it, but making sure that we have some diverse perspectives from the, from all across the city on where placement might be, could be beneficial.
Sure. We, we talked about it with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. They liked the project. They're not very keen on the location. One reason is that's a popular place for sleigh riding. We don't get much snow anymore, but we did this, this season, and, and it is a popular place for the kids to sleigh ride. Luckily, there's a, another hill close by, right behind the rec center that they could use. And, you know, that path is somewhat narrow. We talked to Brian Kim about possibly widening that path in the future. So we're looking into that.
Councilmember Pompey, and then Mayor Pro Tim Weaver.
Yeah, actually, that's what I was going to ask you about. If you could speak to the issues that Prab had regarding the usability of that space already and its accessibility, but I think you've already answered that.
Yeah, that's, those were their two main issues. And, and we talked about other locations, but we weren't able to, to land on one that we could look at.
Mayor Pro Tim Weaver, are you there?
Yeah, and I was also wanted to make sure we addressed Prab's concerns, because I think accessibility was just one of them, the narrowness, and I, I think to, to a certain extent, the slope. But the other concern was some of the additional, the, the, the Public Works maintenance that would be required around these additional posts. And so I think that one, that's one thing, and it sounds like clearly you're in contact with Public Works, but maybe you can talk about that. And then the other question I was, I was just interested in, because it also talked about doing it as, as a pilot project, but then potentially considering removing the posts. And I was just, can we talk a little bit more about that? Because it seems like, I mean, these are posts that are getting, I mean, they're getting concrete footings as I, as I look at the diagrams. Am I understanding that correctly? It just seems like, I just want to make sure that we're thinking this through. If we're, if we're thinking that it might be temporary in a sense, that seems like, what are, was it going to look like if we remove it afterwards? What is that going to do to the aesthetics of the area if we decide it's not a good place for it, for whatever reason? That seems like something to think about, given the way it's framed as maybe not being permanent if we decide it doesn't work as well there as we wanted it to.
Sure.
So maybe, yeah.
Yeah, so to answer your first question, or the last question first, if we decide that this isn't a good project, we'll certainly have to pull the post and backfill and plant grass seed and make sure it doesn't turn into a mud pit. Hopefully, that doesn't happen. And your first question was if council, the maintenance around the post and, and the posts themselves, if council approves the project, I think what we would do is work out an MOU with the library system on maintenance and, and of the grounds around the post and maintenance of the post and turning over the story. All that stuff would be worked into an MOU.
But in general, Public Works doesn't have concerns about any added maintenance burden from these posts?
No. Mr. Kim, Ms. Ruby, and myself, and, and their team, we all went out and walked the grounds multiple times with Mr. Pfeifer and talked about that stuff. So I think we're all, we're all good with that.
Councilmember McKinnon.
I should have mentioned one more thing. The Central Park of Greenbelt Station is also a beautiful location that is a full park all the way around it. And the neighborhood itself has lots of young children, and they're always using that park. So an additional place to look at in the future-
Sure.
-for future expansion.
Okay, Councilmember Nissel.
Yes, I, not to keep harping on the location, but I had a similar question, just simply around the library, where else you guys had considered. I have a lot of concerns with how steep that path is, especially if you're navigating with little kids, and how you've accounted for the traffic issue of sending people this way and then having them loop. I just wanted to hear a little bit about how you've thought about it.
Yeah, so there's certainly going to have to be some people working together, because that path is narrow until we can get it widened. So I think you're talking about the slope around the playground? Because it's pretty flat from the tennis courts up to the underpass.
Not going down the path from, from the library. I guess you can go, I hate talking about this when we don't have a map in front of us. You know, you could go down the actual parking lot and enter by the back door of the youth center, right?
Yeah.
And then it's fairly flat. But what most people would do is they would go down the two very steep paths. One is going to land you at where you have number one right now, which is covered up by the captions. And then the other one would land you right around number five, I think. There's another one that goes down sort of to the side. Neither is super easy to do with a stroller.
Yeah, well, I think this is targeting ages three to six or some, John, is that correct?
I think it's targeting families.
Right, but, but they'll, they'll be with their guardian, is what I'm trying to say. Most of these kids will be with their guardian, and they'll have to navigate that path and what's safe for them or what's most convenient for them.
I guess what I'm going for is, were there other locations considered? For example, the green space around the library lawn?
Oh, the front lawn of the community center? We did talk about that. We did not think that was a good location. We have the, the bass reliefs there. That's kind of, we thought that that's kind of a sacred area, and we didn't want to put 24 stanchions around it. That's, that's our thought, but we're willing to entertain anything council thinks would be a better location, to be honest. Yeah.
And I'm sorry, I had one more question. And this is less of a question of, it's a temporary installation. But how long is that acrylic that goes down on the front going to last? What is the time span of that?
Turn that over to John. He knows the answer to that.
I think it will, I, I mean, other libraries and other parks who have had them, sort of plan on replacing them every 18 to 24 months. So, and, and that would be something that we would maintain and make sure that people could see the pages through the acrylic.
Okay. I saw a lot of costs accounted for in the proposal, and that is one where I hadn't seen a replacement cost associated with it or a schedule, so.
Yeah, I think the, the library's intent is to assume the cost of maintaining what people will see in view. When, when I first met with them, interim city manager George and interim assistant city manager Sandland, I think it was just about a year ago, right before the grant was, we, we applied for the grant, I thought, you know, this was Karen's idea. And I thought, well, having asked for and received $20,000 from the city, what a wonderful opportunity for the library to, in essence, give this $20,000 back to the city and share what the city had given us for the benefit of everyone in the city. And Mr. Varda and all of the staff have been wonderful to, to work with, introducing us to the concrete contractor who will pour, pour the 21 stations. And sort of in, in reference to the, the question about starting nearer the tennis courts, where it's flatter to access the path, I think we could create some signage to direct people that way, because that has the added benefit of getting people to start at the beginning of the story. Otherwise, if they go down a different way, they're going to end up in the middle of the book, and we want them to start at the beginning.
So I have just a couple of questions. So just in terms of circulation. So the, the stanchions, the stations will be there, but how often would it be the same book there permanently, or how often would that change around?
No, I think the plan, and, and Karen's already created a $500 list of books that we will use over the course of the next several years. So every four to six weeks.
Okay, okay. And it, it would be a positive for, for the library and for the city, is, I, I assume. I know you, this would actually, this would be something that you would publicize across the library system. So it would be another thing to attract people into our library in Roosevelt Center. And if I'm not mistaken, the Greenbelt Library had one of the highest circulations, at least before COVID. We had the highest or one of the highest circulations in, in the, in the system.
The north area has a top four in the system.
Sorry, the north area of Prince George's County does have amongst the top four highest circulating branch, of which Greenbelt is somewhere usually between the number two and four spot, depending on what month it is.
So it would, this, this would attract more people to, to the library in Greenbelt and to Greenbelt in general, which is a good thing.
And one of the things that the benefit of storywalks is that not only, sometimes books aren't the full length of the storywalk, because books lengths vary, you can also use that to market events and things that are going on in those empty acrylics. So you could highlight some of the programs that Park and Wreckers is presenting, or the library is presenting, or other things in the community that might be beneficial for families to be aware of.
And we love our library, and we, we love that auditorium in the library. The only thing that's missing is you, you need a Greenbelt flag in there.
Oh, yes.
We've gotten that, we've gotten that question an awful lot in the last couple of months. I don't know where it's coming from, though.
And we'll have to see if we can do something about that. But, but on the serious note, I do have a couple of concerns. One, I really am concerned about preserving the integrity of the, the benches and the memorial around that, that peace pole, because that's, that's an important site, even though it's not heavily utilized. It is important. And the other thing, Mr. Varda, you mentioned the mud path. And as Mr. Varda knows, I'm down in that area very often. In fact, I was down there yesterday. And walking down there, the, the runoff, the water runoff sort of goes down that direction, and, and the grass and whatnot between that pathway and the parking lot, it, it is kind of mushy and slippery. At the bottom of the foot of the path there, and this is for Mr. Kim as well, there's a stormwater management feature that, that is, it needs to be maintained. It's not really working now. It's sort of, it's silted in completely. So somewhere on our longer-term list of priorities, we need to maybe get some volunteers to help clean that up so it's functional once again. But, so what about that? You're very familiar with the area because you're out there. It is muddy.
Yeah, that whole area, I mean, Bradenfield itself is a, was, it's a flood, a flood plain, you know, and all the water runs from Greenbelt or up here runs down into that area. Yeah, we can, we need to do some maintenance on that, on that one area between the parking lot and the path. I think, I don't think that's a huge lift. We can spruce that up a little bit and make it more functional. A lot of the dirt, I mean, you can see it in the parking lot. A lot of the dirt runs off that hill by the skate park, and it runs through the path, and it collects right there in the parking lot.
Right.
You can see that after hard rain, yes.
So I guess my inclination would be, you know, as, as staff has recommended, to sort of, you know, take a, you know, let it go forward on a provisional basis, 18 months, evaluate, you know, the, the circulation, maybe, maybe all of the stations would, would not be, a smaller footprint might actually work better. I don't know. It's, you have storywalks in other locations, but I'm willing to, to give it a try. Councilmember Pompey.
I just wanted to call to Ms. Luoma's attention, the concern that the Advisory Committee and Education raised, well, not concern, but suggestion that you all consider including-
in education raised, well, not concern, but suggestion that you all consider including books in languages other than English, because we do have, we have a French immersion school here, so, and there are a lot of Greenbelt families whose children go there and are learning French, and we also have a growing Spanish-speaking population here. So just to sort of integrate those into the, with English books as well.
Yep, out of the couple of titles I have, I don't have any French titles yet because they're a little harder to come by in the picture book format. The bilingual Spanish ones are a little bit easier to come by right now, at least via the methods that we purchase materials. I have about five or six titles out of the 15 titles on my list that are in bilingual format, so English and Spanish particularly.
Thank you.
Not to mention that there are representatives of multiple cultures as authors.
Okay, is there further discussion, public comment, or would someone like to make a motion? Yeah, Mr. Hartman. And if someone would like to make a motion, we can still take public comment. But Mr. Hartman, please go ahead.
Michael Hartman to Court Gardiner. First, I'd like to congratulate you on that, this wonderful, great idea. And I would like to make some observations if I could. The Rec Department has already shown that they're very mindful of people with disabilities, even tonight they've shown that. But these comments are predicated on the part of the application that said the mission of the Greenbelt Branch and the Prince George's County Memorial Library System and its foundation is we build relationships that support discovery by providing equal access to opportunities and experience. And I think that that comes in many different ways. It's not just accessibility for mobility, people who are looking at mobility issues, but also looking at, and I want to associate myself with the comments of the advisor community in education and Ms. Pompey's comment about having other languages and cultures. But this also could be an opportunity for other accessibility efforts, including recorded books, also that in addition to the fiscal accessibility, you know, indications of messages in Braille. And so one of the things is that, looking at the pedestal, I'm wondering if it's possible to lower or change the angle of it for people with different height, readers at different heights. Sometimes a 45-degree angle is not accessible to some people, and so I'm wondering if that stanchion that you're doing can be accessible or changed. The thing about the pathways is that it's not only the slope and the width of the pathway, it's also the materials that they're made from, both the pathway and the areas directly around the reading thing. And the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board did bring that up in their comments, but it's also the slope from side to side, as well as from front to back. And so those things should be looked at and addressed. And I hope that before this is completed or put into operation, that the pathways, slopes, materials, and everything is finished to a degree that everyone, as a library has always done, everyone can participate in this in various ways. And looking at accessibility from these various angles, not just one or two. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Let's see, Councilmember Pompey.
I move that the council approve the implementation of the story walk project as detailed in the APB report.
Pilot program for 18 months to be evaluated?
Yes, as a pilot program for 18 months to be evaluated at the end of that period.
I can second that.
Ms. Pope has seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please go ahead, please.
I was just wondering, how long will it take to install this? Like, once we have, once you get it underway, which I assume we'll have to wait until at least it gets a little warmer out.
Yeah. The good news, since we first walked the path in November, sort of the process itself got us through the majority of the rougher weather. So if the council is kind enough to approve this, I will order the stations in the morning, and as soon as they're in, we'll work with our concrete contractor and city staff to come up with a suitable time where it's dry enough to install them.
So soon? Great, okay.
Okay, thank you so much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Okay, so that's six and one, one, okay, six, one. The motion does carry, yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see, next up, we've got another proposal. This is item number 13, and this is an item to authorize the city manager to execute contract with Budget Painting LLC for painting at Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center. And it's based on a memorandum from Brian Kim. In following with council's approval of the painting contract recommendation made on March 25, 2024, the contractors subsequently declined to move forward with the project. Staff engaged the next lowest bidder to which they accepted the project and would honor the pricing originally submitted by the lowest bidder. So staff is recommending that council approve the painting services from Budget Printing LLC in the amount of $11,550. Brian Kim, are you here? Thank you for joining us this evening. So we approved the painting contract at the last council meeting, and for whatever the reason, the contractor had changed their mind about going forward.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, okay, so, but we were able, with the next lowest bidder, we were able, they agreed to actually come in at that same price point?
Yes, sir. They agreed to honor the price.
Right. Well, I know this project, it wasn't just the price that was a concern, but it was also the timing, because there are so many recreational programs and festivals. I think the spring, there's a spring festival coming up over at the Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center, and I think that's in May, is it not, in May? Well, I guess Greg Varda would know.
Just to touch base on that, we're holding off on that, hoping we can get the playground installed and do the spring festival with a ribbon cutting. So I'm hoping to get a start date on that playground this week, and if it matches up, and my fingers crossed it will, then we're going to plan that event, but we don't have a date for that yet.
Okay, knock on wood, that would be really, really great, because there is a lot of activity coming up at the recreation center, and to be able to have that playground ready to go, and the new paint job would be very, very meaningful. So as far as the painting, that's ready as soon as we approve this, or as soon as the city manager, we authorize the city manager to modify and to go ahead with the project. When will the paintbrushes and rollers start to fly?
So within the week. We've already engaged the contractor, they're ready to go. I believe we've talked to recreation and confirmed the painting colors, and everybody's happy with the colors, so.
Right, right. Yeah, I was over there yesterday just helping out with the cheers, planning the Three Sisters Garden, and I was talking with Brian Butler over there, who's the community, the center director, I guess, de facto, and we were talking about the color scheme, so we were thinking gray, going with a gray and a white.
So it'll be exactly like the youth center, but the stripe in the middle will be green.
Green striped and down the middle?
Instead of black.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds very attractive. You like that, Ms. Pope?
I think it's fine. It's fine, it's good. Green, blue. If it looks good, you go ahead. But I think I would like to move that we approve the purchase of painting services to Budget Painting LLC in the amount of $11,550.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Pompey has seconded. Hey, is there any further discussion? If, hearing none.
Ms. Cecil.
Oh, Ms. Cecil, please go ahead.
I wanted to say thank you again. They're over there painting already, and it already looks so much brighter, so thank you again for getting this done so quickly.
Fantastic. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? The motion carries, it's unanimous. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Kim.
Thank you.
Get those rollers going.
Yeah, and, you know, thank you for working with Mr. Varda and getting that playground project moving ahead. That's so important, and we're so hoping that somehow the contractor, who is going to be working on the playground, is, can expeditiously begin the project, so, yeah. And Ms. Pope?
Mr. Varda, don't forget my email and let me know about the play, if we can, second grade would like to use the outdoor area for the end of your picnic. And the city's always been kind enough to open the restrooms for us because we go over there in the morning, so the children can go to use the restroom. So I was asking for the date, but of course, we don't know yet because of the playground, the new playground installment, so just to, just let me know.
Yeah, I'm hoping to get back to you this week on that.
Great, awesome. Thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much, really appreciate it. Item number 14 is the red light camera contract agreement, and this, our police chief Bowers is here to join us. That's the contract with Vera Mobility. In 2002, the Greenbelt Police Department partnered with the Howard County Police Department to implement a red light camera enforcement program. The program is still managed by Howard County Police Department and has successfully reduced costs for the city. In 2023, Howard County concluded a RFP, a request for proposal process, and selected Vera Mobility to take over the program. The new contract introduced a per-site fee pricing model, resulting in a significant cost savings for the city. A comparison of the new pricing model with the previous contract shows the city will save approximately $70,000 in the first year of the contract, based on the number of citations issued in 2023. Chief Bowers, welcome, nice to have you here.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Okay, this came up before, and there were a couple of questions, but as far as the pricing model, the previous pricing model was a percentage, and instead this is a fixed fee for the service?
So the previous pricing model included a flat fee for each site that we have, which there are six sites, and then we paid a per citation fee in addition to that flat cost. So there were really two fees associated. One was variable based on the number of citations we issued, and the other was fixed based on the number of sites we had. The new pricing plan that's gone into effect is a little bit higher per site, but it is, it did away with the per citation fee, so it is a fixed cost permanently now, so we're able to easily budget for what that fixed cost will be.
Yeah, I appreciate that. The notion of a per citation fee just rubs me the wrong way a little bit, because it sort of suggests that somehow there's, there could be a profit motive for giving out more citations, and we really want to avoid that, that thought or that possibility, because it's not about money, it's about safety with these red light cameras.
Yes, and so this, we think, just based on some initial estimates, there will be a substantial savings to the city in terms of what those contract fees will be for us, and we'll continue to be able to have the newest technology like we have now, continue to try to make the road and the intersections as safe as we can. One of the questions that came up at the last council meeting from Councilmember Roberts was about the number of collisions that occur at those intersections, and that number's relatively low. We have a couple of different numbers. At Greenbelt and Mandan, we average about seven crashes a year there. These are reportable crashes, so those are the ones in which the officers had to take an accident report, not just a very minor exchange of information. Down at Cherrywood, we had eight, and then on Kennelworth at I-495, we had four. So pretty, pretty low crash totals, and we'd like to think that that's attributable to those cameras being there, helping to slow down some of those violations to keep those crashes lower. When we would have put the site, those cameras in in 2002, that crash data would have been substantially higher. I don't have the historical data, unfortunately, but they would have had to been approved by SHA, the State Highway Administration, based on crash data there, so you can imagine that that data was much higher at the time, and so the camera program has been successful in reducing those crashes.
Right, two questions. So six sites, and I don't think, last year or two, maybe it was last year or two years ago, we didn't have all six sites in operation.
So we actually had more sites.
More sites.
We had eight sites previously. In 2019, there was road construction at one of the sites, and the state highway administration removed our camera system. And when they put the, they, when they finished their reengineering of that intersection, we had to resubmit, once you take a camera down on their roads, you have to resubmit and start the application process all over again. And when we resubmitted, they denied our request because they said they had just reengineered the intersection, and they needed crash data to see if their reengineering had not worked. So we have not been able to put the seventh and eighth cameras back up.
Which intersection was that?
It was at 201 and Greenbelt.
Okay, okay. And just one more question. We were talking at a council meeting or work session about red light cameras, and Kennelworth in particular has been challenging with speeding and racing, and also people running red lights and whatnot, particularly down on Pontiac. And that location is very close to a school, the Friends Community School is right there, very, very close. So have you given any thought to the possibility of requesting a camera, maybe going southbound on Kennelworth?
So we have not looked at red light cameras on Kennelworth down at that area. We would have to do crash data analysis for the intersection. If you're talking about speed cameras, those would be, you know, kind of a different conversation because of the different rules that apply, and it has to be residential zone to be able to put a speed camera out on a roadway, particularly a state highway. And anytime it's a state highway, they govern anything that goes on the roadway, so there's a lengthy application process that must go with it, and they have to get their approval. Their approval is always based on crash data. So if there's not a lot of crashes at that intersection, they're not going to approve a speed camera or a red light camera at that location.
Yeah, understood. There have been a number of fatalities up there at the intersection of Hanover Parkway, or not Hanover Parkway, Kennelworth and Greenbelt Road, and over by the Friends School, there have been accidents. So that right of way that's there, is the right of way our jurisdiction, or would that be Berwyn Heights or College Park, or is it unincorporated?
So at Pontiac, I believe, don't quote me, but I believe both sides of the highway are ours, but the coming out of Berwyn Heights is theirs.
Right.
So we have the main lanes of the roadway. The line does, at various points, sort of swish across the roadway, and at various points, we only have one side of 201 there below Pontiac, and we only have portion of the intersection. So the line is, kind of runs, doesn't run right down the side of the road there, it sort of moves back and forth, and so you'd have to kind of take that in mind, particularly where the condo buildings are there. There's a cutout at West Chester Park for those, so we don't have that portion of the roadway, that's all unincorporated.
Right, there's definitely big time speeding and racing up and down Kennelworth in that location, so I think, I would suggest that's something to look at. As far as the crash data, you know, with red light cameras, arguably, a crash, if someone sees a red light camera and they slam on their brakes, they could get rear-ended. So some of the accidents might actually be a result of that. But Councilmember McKenney, please.
Is the intersection of Greenbelt Station Parkway and Greenbelt Road considered state highway, or is that a place that could potentially also be looked at?
So Greenbelt Road is considered a state roadway, and we would have to get their permission. The other thing that happens where the station Parkway comes out onto Greenbelt Road, you're actually out into, I think, an unincorporated area or Berwyn Heights, so that portion of the roadway is not within the city's jurisdiction. Once you go onto Greenbelt Road at where Greenbelt Station Parkway is, and as you come back south, it comes back into the city. Because that whole side is Berwyn Heights until you get almost all the way up past the McDonald's.
I think we had asked the state highway, when they came for the work session, to look at that. That light is considered, people run that light all the time, and you have the students getting off of the University of Maryland shuttle, crossing the street to get into the neighborhood, and people are just running the light. So it's something hopefully that we can follow up with, maybe on our next work session with state highway.
I can talk to the chief in Berwyn Heights.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion about this? Oh, Mayor Portem Weaver, are you there?
Yeah, I guess, I guess my question is, because I noticed that because the actual amounts are redacted in that contract, we don't actually have, I mean, you know.
Portem, you've frozen up.
The saving $70,000 contract is, am I back? Yeah, I might.
You.
Internet's being a little unstable.
Yeah, try it again.
Let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn off my video for a minute and see if that helps.
Didn't help.
So my question is, because it doesn't actually say how much the contract is for? Still not. Thought?
Still not.
Can you hear me?
They're still breaking up. Maybe you can email it or chat it in.
Let me, let me try calling.
Okay. And it seemed like she was about to ask a question. The the amount of the contract is not really in here. How much is this contract?
So provided for you a confidential memo kind of late this afternoon that should have been with your packet. So I apologize to Mayor Protim that she didn't get it. But it does have the pricing listed, the pricing agreement that we have, the agreement we have with Howard County. When their Office of Law provides those contracts publicly, those dollar amounts are redacted for an RFP process. So they have confidentiality and some integrity to the process the next time they go through. So that's why that's separate in a separate document where you see the pricing.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you.
And I can be more than happy to shoot that over to Mayor Protim.
Okay, Ms. Pope?
Yeah, though I would like to move that that we authorize city manager to execute the agreement between Vera Mobility, Vera Mobility for our red light camera program.
Sir, second? Okay, Councilmember Niesel is second. Has Mayor Protim, has she typed anything in?
I don't see anything from her. I don't see anything in my inbox either.
So she's gonna try and call. Madam Clerk?
She said that was her question.
That was her question.
We'll make sure to email that memo to her so she sees the price.
Okay, okay. Mr. Hartman?
Michael Hartman, Two Court, Gardenway. Chief, one of the issues that I found going down Kennelworth is that the speed limit changes so often. And just on the underpass, it seems like it goes up to 50 miles an hour, from 30 or 35. Is it possible to put more signage about what the speed limit is? Because it changes like really quickly, and it could be very confusing to people. So.
It's a road governed by the state highway administration. We can, we can talk to them about getting that done. Just as an aside to that, you know, we've had a lot of issues with commercial motor vehicles parking along 201, particularly under the underpass, things like that. So getting them to respond to put up the appropriate signage to help us with that problem was, it's taken some time, but but I'll talk to them about seeing what we can do about signage.
That's a good point. You know, the the speed, it's for a cyclist, someone on a bicycle that coming off of Crescent, and let's say they're they're hit it down to the where the purple line is going to intersect, which is a straight shot, it's downhill. You know, the cars are just going so fast. And I was over there yesterday doing something by the courthouse, and there were literally motorcycles and cars just literally racing as fast as they could back and forth between Edmundston and Kennelworth. So it's a real problem. Let's see. Mr. Orleans, please.
Thank you, Mr. Orleans, resident. I was pleased to read on the first page of the item report that the agreement with Vera Mobility was more cost effective and met the city's living wage requirement. I didn't even have to look through the contract on the front page. That's very nice. I don't, of course, know precisely what that means. I don't know how many employees of Vera Mobility are going to be installing cameras or any other equipment in Greenbelt as part of this MOU from Howard County. But more importantly, it's an Arizona corporation. And while the city of Greenbelt's leeches reach is immense, it doesn't necessarily reach to Arizona. But the point in the city adopting a living wage policy was that any vendor, wherever they're they might be, their home base might be, agrees to the city of Greenbelt's living wage policy. And while I'm impressed that it's on the front page of the memo, I don't know if that means that in Arizona or elsewhere that American Traffic Solutions actually has business operations, have business operations. It means that in each of those operations, those locations, they're paying all their employees a living wage by Greenbelt standards. And we should know the answer to that question. Thank you.
City manager, Somarun, do you?
I don't know the details of their of their employee relations and wages in Arizona. I know that our enforceability of a contract would be in Maryland only. And so we can, I can look into what what pay standards they may have for the support staff in Arizona. But I imagine that that's what the staff in Arizona would be, would be support staff, not the folks that are directly servicing and maintaining the cameras here in in Greenbelt.
Chief, is there anything else you want to? They'd probably be using contractors, local contractors or regional contractors. They're not sending people from Arizona.
Their staff here in Maryland.
Oh, thank you for clarifying that. Yes. Hey, if there are no further questions, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion carries six to one. Six in favor, one one opposed. Okay, that's going to take us to item number 18, which is 15, which is the American Rescue Plan Act status update. Mr. George is with us. Included in the packet is a memorandum outlining the American Rescue Plan Act progress to date, and a summary with a summary of activities, allocations, and projects. Staff has provided a table showing the grant program funding by area of the city. Also, staff is developing a map to show this graphically, and that map will include additional ARPA funding projects and initiatives. So, Mr. George, thank you for pulling this information together. Do you want to summarize your your memo and also the the map and the table? If you could, is there a way we could kind of project those on the screen?
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
So one of the things that that Hosway has asked, I mean, as well as you, is it, I come, we come back every couple of weeks, just to give you an update of where we are on the numbers. Some of the numbers change a lot, some don't change much. It's just as as the projects are coming through. So I want to repeat the definitions. So any residents that haven't seen this memo before would understand what we mean with each of these different project types. But they're the same as we've used before. I think we're just showing really the the bottom line is is we're, we're getting down to the end. We've got a lot of, we've got almost all of the money either committed or under development on projects that you all have already approved or we're actively working towards. The uncommitted amount is down to 850,000. The breakdown is 524 is ARPA, and that's the restricted, the more restricted funding, 324 in lost revenue. And remember, the the ARPA money is, you know, we can use that on recreation projects, we can use it on direct grant programs. We have extended, I think I told you last time, we have extended all of our grant programs through the end of August. In fact, I had a great meeting today with a group for a nonprofit idea to to work on with folks who are trying to get driver's licenses, who don't have the money for that. So we're still really actively working with with those folks. The Mr. Somarun signed the MOU with the People First Coalition, so they can get active very quickly on their engagement, which we're really excited about, hoping that that will bring more people and direct them towards the toward micro grants, the micro grant program, the initial 50,000 that was allocated, still has 36,000 left. So we're hoping that all that gets used up, and then we have to allocate more to it. And that's one of the main things that Nirvan and Bob and the others are going to be focused on is is really, and Tom Adams, getting people directed into that, into those programs, especially the folks out in West Greenbelt that have not engaged in those programs as much as the others have. So that's kind of where we are numerically. We can certainly talk about those. Before I get to the back page, one of the things, chat with staff about today and city managers, that I'm going to be and have been over the last month, but will be looking very closely at every line item of ARPA over the next few weeks to see exactly where we are. Chat with staff about our progress. We'll make some go no go decisions on programs to make sure that we're going to be able to allocate and encumber by the end of November. And as those those numbers change, certainly get, you know, Hosway involved in as we need to do any significant reallocation, staff will have ideas and bring those before council. So that's all kind of in the workings. You know, as I've told you all from for a long time, these numbers are very fluid. They go up and they go down, not because of issues or errors, but because some projects come in under budget, some come in a little over budget, some projects we realize we're not going to be able to accomplish by the deadline. So they get tabled, simply because, you know, prices change. The COVID pricing went up, and COVID pricing has not come down, even though COVID has gone away. So a lot of the numbers that we came up with two years ago are being recast because of the because of the new because of inflation from COVID. On the second page is something that you all asked for. I do promise that at the next meeting will be in a map form. But given the the time we had, I want to thank Liz Park for being very helpful with me and reaching out to the grant programs that she's directly overseeing. But this is, this is basically current to last week of where we are with all of the programs. We turned it into into dollars spent. Because there's so many grantees on the healthcare, if we did it by a number of people served, it would really skew the numbers in a in different directions. But if you look at the bottom line, we're pretty even across the three areas of the city in terms of where the grant funding is going. We will be adding other programmatic spending for, you know, playgrounds and things like that to the next version of this. But again, given the the time we had to pull this together, want to get this, these numbers to you accurately as possible. So in the West, 37.7% of our grant funding has gone to residents and businesses in the West, 29.8 in the center, and 32.5 in the East. So really a pretty even distribution of of ARPA funding under the grants programs. And again, I'll come back to you in two weeks, and I'll include the other programmatic funding for for buildings and that sort of thing. So if you have any questions on that point, I can pause.
I've got a few questions. Thank you for pulling this together. It's very, very helpful. And by sharing the information with council and the public, it helps us to to guide our thinking, to, you know, make sure that we're spending this money as as impactfully as possible. So a couple of things, just looking at that last chart, I'm a little surprised that with the tree canopy grants, I'm a little surprised that we didn't get an application from any of the communities, from the community over in Greenbelt West for tree canopy, given the fact that they had so much destruction really from that that huge storm that we got a few years back. So but it looks as though we've actually zeroed out that that category. Is that correct?
Yeah, we did not get any applications from from that. And I certainly spoke with them during our, when we when our had our walking tour, as well as I sent all the information and the direct links to those grant opportunities to them. So and I've spoken with with Ms. Knight, subsequent to get the letter, know that I'm I can have happy help with any Q and A that she might have, any any thoughts on the thing. I know they're really focused on the Kaboom application for redoing the second pool, and and the city is partnering and helping with that. So it may be that their focus has really been on that second pool project. But they are aware of these other grant programs, and if they submit an application, we'll certainly process it for them.
Okay. And another line item with the scholarships or the funding that we have for workforce development to some extent, we're getting to that that time of the year when a lot of high school seniors have actually made a choice, and they'll be getting letters back in May about acceptance to the college or certificates. So it looks like we've got some funding available. And I want to make sure that we get the word out to the schools, to Roosevelt, and not just Roosevelt, that we've got a fair number of students that are going other places to other schools. And of course, workforce development, people that are going after certificates. So about how much money will we have in that pot, starting in May?
Pulling up, I believe we still have about $100,000 in that in that fund. I want to point out that James and Chandra, especially James, have done a fantastic job of getting the word out. He's reposted all these. They've put it back out on social media. We are going to reach out to the same sources. Ms. Pope actually was very helpful before becoming councilmember in connecting us with PTAs and other groups. We are, we have a small list of folks that are homeschool. So we are trying to reach out to the same group that we reached out to a year or so ago, so that everyone is aware that there is additional funding for these programs.
Because I know over at Roosevelt, they could, the guy and his counselors could literally give away as much money as we have. So we need to be balanced to have a a plan that's that we can articulate and make sure that the funding that's going out is going out in a balanced way. But Roosevelt is coming up pretty soon. But what about the workforce development piece? That's one area that I know there there's been a lot of thought. But I'm not sure how far along we are in thinking through and making available grants for workforce development. So where are we at with that program in particular?
Well, the, so there's two different workforce programs. I think Mr. Somarun can speak to the business side. The the resident side is the one that's in your table, and that's the grant program that Kares has been operating, Liz and her team have been doing. And that's really focused on individuals that they've been working with through their program to help them find jobs and get training so they can be employed. So we're really looking at it both sides. One side is to look at, from an individual side, people that are looking for jobs and need to be trained. The other is to work with our businesses to find out what their employment and training needs are, and then provide employment and training to the businesses so they can then find employees. So we're working both sides of the equation. What's in this table really focuses on the direct rents to residents so that they can get trained and then go get seek employment.
Yeah. And let's not forget about retraining. One of the things that happened in COVID, a lot of people sort of did a reset. So it's kind of, I don't know to the extent that we have tracked individuals, you know, I hate to say older individuals, but people people who have just decided to change careers a lot, as opposed to people that are just coming out of high school and looking for additional training. It's sort of a dichotomy there. It's different, different population. And I think it's important that we, if we have resources, to continue to emphasize that that it's available, not just for quote unquote, young people, but for for all people.
Well, Train ACE is a training group that works with folks that are trying to to reenter the workforce or change their path in the workforce. So we are also focused on, you know, folks that are out there beyond the high school, beyond college, that are looking for that training. One of the reasons why we talked to you all a few few meetings ago or a month ago about kind of combining the education grant with the workforces so that we'd have a greater pool and really have more flexibility to offer that money to the training money to anyone, whether you're going to college or whether you're going to retraining or training. So that that's a big focus of ours is to get out of COVID is to really help people learn a new skill set so they can get a job and they can they can be sustainable.
Very good. Councilmember McKinney.
One more place, just as far as communicating out, I was going to send a note to one of the local churches, but especially about the educational grants. We have a lot of churches with a lot of kids in the area. That might be an additional network to make sure they get that out.
Sure. Mayor Protim? Let's see, I think you're muted right now, Mayor Protim.
She's having some trouble.
There you go.
Can you hear me on the phone?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so I'm in on the phone now. Sorry about that earlier. So thank you, by the way, for putting together the chart with the the geographic areas. And I think actually, based on what I've tried to do as estimates for the different geographic areas, I think that percentage actually matches reasonably well with the actual population and the different sections of the city, because Greenbelt West actually does have a higher population, I believe, than the other two sections that's not evenly divided. My question is, so the mortgage down payment assistance, does that include both the GHI mortgage assistance, which I know is in a slightly different category, as well as the more standard mortgage assistance?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
And that, if I might add, that that program is is extremely successful because of what we talked about last time. There, there's three more grants that are not included in this table because we haven't, you know, secured them. But I've heard from our, from preferred title, they have three more folks that are looking to to purchase homes. So we'll be seeing those applications officially come across in the next two to three weeks. So they've been very successful. I've had a meeting with our D H C D, the Maryland Housing that's running the the non-GHI program, about doing some additional outreach. We're going to do a virtual outreach session with them that they've done in other communities, have been very successful. And then we're going to try to plan a another physical outreach session in the Greenbelt West area so we can have another face to face to give residents another opportunity to learn directly from D H C D how learn directly from DHCD how their program works.
Yeah, very good. I appreciate the update. You know, we're, we're at the stage now where we're making some reallocations and some decisions where council is constantly in contact with residents and we hear things from different places throughout the community. So, you know, I think for council to be able to weigh in with the advice and guidance of staff, I think we're at an important stage. Also, thanks for pulling this together, you know, at our, when the National League of Cities comes and visits with us next Monday, I know one of the things that, that I'll probably talk about a bit is how we've used some of this ARPA funding to, to really make a difference. And I think our city is a great case study in how direct funding from the federal government to a local jurisdiction like Greenbelt can, can really change the course of individuals' life. So I think to the extent that we focused on people with the ARPA grants, you know, aside from the lost revenue side of things, I think it's a great example of, of what federal support can do when it comes to the hands of folks on the local level. So probably use some of these charts. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Orleans?
Thank you. I'm a little confused about a lot of things. I'm a little confused about the distinction between completed and committed. In looking at page two, it's all funding that's been committed, but it's a lesser total funding than suggested on page one. But my, actually, my main question, in all this list on page two, it's an impressive list, there's no reference to the emergency rent monies that were distributed. And I'm certainly interested in knowing what might be, what, might approximate the total rent, emergency rent monies that the city's paid out. And I'm just curious why, I would think that would be a larger figure than maybe any of the rest of these and why it's not here.
Well, this table is specifically for the active grant programs that we've been operating over the last year. The, the emergency funding and also the emergency business funding that we first put out is also not in the table. We can certainly add that into this. I think that's, as you know, Mr. Orleans, is roughly 2.7 million in rental assistance that we've provided. Again, that would really skew the table in a different direction. We're really trying to focus on the grant programs that we've been really working to get the residents involved in and applying for, which is what this table is focusing on.
I rather thought this was review of all our ARPA monies received and, and distributed. In as much as I don't know precisely, you say, I know it's 2.7 million, I don't know that. But there are still monies yet to be committed and I have suggested in the past, would suggest again, there may still be a need out there for continuing rental assistance, whether it's emergency or not. And it would never be a bad use of these funds to put it in that direction. But I'd like to see at some point, a chart that would list all of the expenditures of ARPA monies, where they went, also by parts of the city.
So, Mr. George, on the, the city's engage at greenbelt.org, the website specifically talks and shows where our ARPA funding has gone, will that be updated periodically?
Yeah, we update that at least every couple of weeks as we get new information. We go to the, the base, Excel sheet and it updates automatically.
Okay. So all of that information that
Is online.
That Mr. Orleans just asked about is, is there
Yes, sir.
Online. Yes. Thank you so much. So that was an update. There's no action associated with this item. So if there's no further questions or comments, let's, let's move on to item number 16, which is council activities. I know that we've been, we put together a list online, but who wants to kind of share that or what, do anybody want to talk about any particular activity they participated in or?
I can share that, just give me a second.
Okay. And you're, you're, you're in Hot Springs, Arkansas right now. Is that correct?
I'm actually, I'm actually a bit north of Hot Springs, Fairfield Bay, Arkansas, but close to Hot Springs. A lot of the events I was doing over the last, you know, since Wednesday were in Hot Springs with Hot Springs National Park. But I am, but I am now at Family House where I enjoyed the eclipse today. It's been four, over four minutes in totality. It was amazing.
I was about to say, did you see the eclipse? But apparently you did.
Yeah. Most of the eclipse.
Okay. Okay. Let's see, that's a pretty long list as, as always. There's just so many things going on in Greenbelt every day and council makes a real effort individually and collectively to, to get around as much as we possibly can. So, Ms. Pope?
Before we start, is this the same list as?
Yeah, she just summarized it.
Did you, because I added something to it.
Yeah, she pulled this from, unless you'd like just, just added it.
I added this afternoon. I added the senior citizens.
She should have it on.
Coming.
Yeah. I put something on.
Yeah, it's, it's, I did it about a couple hours, like an hour before the meeting. So yes, if it was something from earlier today, it should be captured from the spreadsheet.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Yeah, I wasn't sure. So I'm like, okay, now we have two.
Anybody need to say anything about anything in particular?
It was very busy. It was fun, but it was very busy.
Okay. Well, let's just leave it at that. If you are interested in seeing what council has been up to in between the meetings and work sessions, you can go. Where would you find this if you were a member of the public and you wanted to, to see what, what council was up to?
If, if I was a citizen and I
I think it
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Point us.
If, if I was a citizen and I wanted to know where council members are, I would look at our community calendar because most council members attend the community events calendar and the city sponsor events on our website.
What's that website again?
Greenbeltindee.gov.
Okay. On homepage.
Was that a test?
Testing, man.
And the other thing is that it does end up as part of the minutes for the meeting notes. Once the meeting notes, so if, it, once the, the official minutes are up as part of the agenda and minutes page, then the, the council activities in which particular council members attended each do go into the official minutes that, that Ms. Anderson prepares.
Of course. Okay. Hey, let's keep moving because we, we have to go into an executive session tonight and there should be some lively conversation that we're going to have. Did I, did I miss anything?
I, I don't know that it should be lively conversation. I think it's a pretty dull topic.
Okay. And it's going to be dull, so we need to get there as soon as possible because it's 9:30 and my bedtime is about 10 o'clock, honestly. So council reports, any council members have reports? Hearing no reports, let's go ahead. We need to go into the closed session. City council is going into a closed session immediately following the council meeting and council chambers. Mayor Protem or Ms. Pope, which would you, which of you would like to be the honors?
I have it in front of me.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, Ms. Anderson sent it to me. So yeah, I have it.
Okay. Will you please read the statement?
I move that council go into closed session in accordance with section 3-305B3 of the general provisions article of the annotated code of the public general laws of Maryland, one, to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters related, directly related thereto. The purpose of this meeting will be, one, to consider the application, the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters directly related thereto. In addition to council, city manager Hosway Summeron and director of planning, Terry Ruby, will be in the session. Note that council will not return to open session following this closed session.
Is there a second? Ms. Pope has seconded. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll for us, please?
Ms. McKinney?
Yes.
Ms. Poppy?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Niesel?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Ms. Weaver?
Yeah.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
And the time is 9:29 Eastern Standard Time.
Really stayed on the, on time, on the agenda today.
Well, you know, it's because council is so well-prepared for all the, the items on the agenda, we're able to kind of move through pretty quickly.
Love to see it.
There you go. So at this time, we will adjourn the council meeting into the executive